I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry.
Minutes from the April 23 meeting to be approved.
I guess I can say this on the interview thing.
Deals to be approved and paid for May. Signed budgetary monthly reports for April. Oh, that's what. That's what she. Well, I don't know whether everybody turned or not, but Tressa resigned and so we have Robin on board with us. Does she need to be approved?
Yes, council has to approve the appointment. So you appoint and they confirm. So she's an appointed official.
Oh, I just said it right.
No, no, so you present somebody and then council has to confirm.
Oh, okay. I present Robin Mitchell as Batesville clerk.
Somebody to motion.
All favor.
I did it.
And we are very happy to have her on board, I'm telling you. Okay, guys, looks like you're up. Did you check on Kurt today?
I spaced out. I was getting busy with calling on the phone and talking to these guys so long. I was trying to find out about several different companies about that type of pumpinary thing else, and so I just talked to several different companies. RPS out of California has got a five horsepower, that's eighty-eight gallons a minute, that's sixty pounds of pressure, that will get up to about ninety-four, ninety-five gallons, forty-five pounds of pressure. Did you check out to find out what a legal...
No, I gotta look into that. I haven't had a chance yet.
I remember years ago, I went to a meeting and they said that if we hold it below, any water would cascade back onto the pond. If we hold it below a certain pressure, it requires no special licensing. If I exceed, and I'm not sure what the pressure is, if I exceed a certain pressure, it's called a high-pressure system, and I have to have a license that will cover it, and I don't know if you guys...
It's like a treatment license or something?
It's like a ground application system.
Oh, a land app?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have that license.
You have that license? So if we hold the pressure, if we can get that okay, I don't know what it takes to get that okay from the...
I can contact the DEQ and figure that out if you want.
I've learned this from years of working in the pump system. If we're putting forty pounds of pressure of water out over the top of the water, about twenty, fifteen to twenty, twenty-five percent of it, depending on the temperature, will never hit the ground, it will evaporate before it gets back onto the top of the water. At eighty pounds of pressure, like we can get at six, we get eighty-eight pounds, or eighty pounds, eighty gallons a minute going into there, forty-five, fifty gallons a minute will not hit the water, it will just evaporate in the air, and we could lose that much water out of our ponds and drop our pond levels by significant levels over the year. They are expensive. Two years ago, when I priced the same system, it was $6,500. Today, it's $10,849 for the pump, for the VFD that controls it, it's a three-phase system, and then the inverter off the panels. There are twenty panels that will have to build a rack and a grid for down there. So the ten thousand will be, ten thousand eight hundred would be the starting numbers, and then you would probably get another two or three thousand into building the racks and the water system. And I don't know whether we would want just a water system going around the edge cascading on the pond, or take probably three pieces of pipe and clipping them together and running across the top of the pond. Two of them hollow, one of them carrying water, and they would float across the top of the pond, and then we could put a sprinkler every so far on it. And so I've never tried this, and I don't know of anybody that's even got one, but I've been thinking about this for a while. If we could do something like that, then we could take out a lot more of the water off the top of the pond. Last year, we went into it with about two feet ahead, and we had almost ten inches of rain and other stuff that accommodated for it, so we really lost all of our head, and we come right up to being just right at the top of our pond's capability. And we can't run anything out of the pond down to Firth, all we can do is the outlet. So in cold weather, going into warm weather, we have to run large amounts, get down to them, just be able to get down to the level. Right now, we're evaporating pretty good, it's going down steadily every day because of the warmer weather and the winds. So I'm a little worried if we continue to have high-water years, we'll be up against it where we have to, maybe before the season's over, turn the water down all winter long. And so that would be it. If we could drop our water tables three feet or more during the hot part of the year, then we would never have a problem with putting it down. I don't know if that costs of what they're gonna charge down here at Firth, but I know it's not gonna... In years past, it's been as high as a couple of $3,000 a month when we put them down.
Have you turned anything down to Firth at all this year?
What the hell?
Have you turned anything to Firth this year at all?
No. Not since the system started.
Yeah, I went, we went and walked the lagoons yesterday, the day before, and they're pretty full. Yeah, it's pretty different, Doug.
What's that?
The lagoons, they're pretty full.
Our ponds are completely full, they're within inches of the job right now.
Enough to make me nervous, so.
Well, you're nervous.
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, I'm talking to Guy, that's why I come tonight, was we need to support something or kind of get something in motion so that we don't have a problem either, whether that's...
Either that or if we continue to have these wet years, we're gonna have to figure out Firth and get them online about selling them water or selling them on our waste. Or for twelve, for thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars right here, we could drop our levels down to we don't ever have a problem. We only can run it, we could run it during the winter, but I don't know how that works because of the freeze-up. So really, if I set the system up in the center of the lagoon and have the solar panels on there, and I'm not sure whether to put the solar panels on a cart and take them away in the wintertime, or to leave them out there, I'm not really sure about that one. But, and we could, we could put them on a trailer so that they're dedicated, we pull it out there, and the pump system would be an unconnect system, we'd take the pump and put it back in the shop each year so that it doesn't freeze up, and so the whole system could go away and be stored each year, and then brought back out when it's warm enough to put it back in. That was my theory on this. It sounds good.
There's other places that do it in California, in Arizona, and it's...
In the hotter areas, they do it. California, they do it.
I mean, and then some places, they don't have, they can't, don't have some of the abilities that we do here for land application or discharge, and so they're stuck with, you know, this type of system, so.
Just a lower-pressure system will be able to move quite a bit of water out of it, but a higher-pressure system, if we can figure out how to change our licensing, then we could move a lot of water out of it, because if we was removing about forty gallons a minute for an eight-hour day, that's nice, that's twelve hundred gallons an hour, we could be losing out of it, and so that would add up a lot, you know, during the day. I'm not sure exactly all of it, but that was my theory on this one, that if we could figure out how to reduce the pond levels, then we would keep away from being in trouble down there, and probably never get in trouble again if we could just use it each year during the warmer weather. Okay?
I'm sorry, you are?
I'm Dustin with Mount West Water Works. I'm your license operator, take care of all the licensing responsibility for the water and the wastewater.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're saying thirteen, fourteen thousand would cover everything at the pump?
Well, I haven't really priced the sprinkler heads that it would take, and so, and I know years ago, when they was having sprinklers on these pivots out here, they had big sprinklers on the top of them that was up high, and they figured, that's why they all went to these spritzers that lay down close to it, because they figured up in the air like that with them big rainbirds, if you put a little atomizer in front of it, twenty-five percent of all the water they run through that pivot, would never hit the field. And so they, everybody got away from sprinklers. And so I'm thinking if we use that same kind of a theory around the edges of that pond or across the top of it, then that much of it we could lose, and they would be able to put it just high enough to keep it within the pond's parameters. And so, and I'm not sure about the littler ones, they have sprayers that are made for pond aerators and stuff like that that they put out, and I was thinking about them, but I haven't ever checked on them, I don't know how they work either. They use them back east where they have hot weather and low oxygen levels. I'm not sure exactly what it will do to our bacterias and stuff, but if...
In a land applicator, in an evaporative sort of situation, we don't really care.
If we use the bigger, noiseless ones like that, like an inch, and then put, have it with that little point that goes on it, it comes out and atomizes real heavily in the air, and then it doesn't go along ways, and so a lot of it, like I said, will not ever, especially at eighty, sixty, seventy, eighty degrees, you lose a lot, but lower temperatures don't lose near a lot as much. But at the higher temperatures, then we could run it from as early as we could get it in the spring till just as late as we can run it in the fall into November, December, the minute it starts freezing up fairly good, then we add it there. And like I said, I'm not sure exactly how to do it, but I was thinking having it set up on a trailer, so the plumber come out and go on the trailer and that, and then take it over to the shop, to the heat and shop, and just leave it inside the heat and shop all winter long. And that would be protected from any of the winter wear and tear, freeze-up. The piping would be able to disconnect and just, if it's floating piping, we could do like that, if it's circular around the pond, which would be cheaper probably than setting a floating piping up, because you just take two pipes on either side, and then a one-inch or an inch and a quarter or something like that in between, and you could use cheap irrigation piping so that it's a lot cheaper than the expensive stuff. And then just take twist ties and hold them all together, and with a little bar across the top of them, and then it'll just work like a little raft on top of the pond.
Do we have to have any prevents for that?
No, as long as it's down to a certain pressure, no.
There's a gravel truck in town, what the heck's he doing?
Who?
Oh, there's a gravel truck just went down there.
As long as it's lower certain pressure, and all we have to do is increase the amount, number of heads to drop pressure down in this pump. This is the biggest volume pump I could get them to get into there. I tried getting two or three smaller pumps set up in the same configuration, the price is so similar that why would you go with more things to break down than one thing? And they're quite a long life company, they've been around for a long time, and they're one of the higher quality. It is a Gould's pump, and a permanent fixed Buell Gould's motor. I handle them all the time, so I know the quality of them, the life's about fifteen, seventeen, nineteen years. And we're using with continual off and on, it might be longer.
Is a, is a neighbor's gonna complain?
I don't think so. You don't have, you're gonna still have the same water coming off evaporating as you do only in the spring when you have the roll, when you have the hydrogen sulfide coming off, but does it cause a lot of smell? The rest of the time...
This will actually, this likely help it, 'cause you're airing it, it'll actually help the smell.
No. Okay?
Got a question. Is this, with the solar panels, this is running during the daytime?
Yeah.
Okay. Get a battery pack, the life-full battery packs, that way it'll run twenty-four hours. Panels will charge up the batteries, and they'll run it at night, you'll do a lot more water.
That's true, and you have to run more panels.
And you also, the batteries, the batteries are quite expensive, and I didn't have them checked out.
Batteries have dropped in price a lot, they're cheaper than lead-acid batteries.
The problem with running it at night, though, is you're not as hot, and you don't have to give a sign on the battery, it isn't much, and it's worth the cost for all that, where we can just do it the day and see how it goes.
And that's what I was thinking, the cost, if we just run it during the daytime, and then would you shut down automatically at night? Batteries, we'd probably put another ten thousand onto a whole battery system.
Because you're not...
Because batteries are not cheap, not...
And you don't need a whole bunch, you just need another...
You can buy some new ones, but the good, higher-quality night pad or steel cadmium batteries, they are expensive.
Those are, what you wanna know is...
Usually two volts, you'll have to have how many?
You wanna go with the lithium-ion phosphate batteries, they'll last ten times as long, and they're not...
Iron phosphate lasts longer?
And they're not that much more expensive.
The iron phosphate ones for twelve volt in Idaho Falls are about four hundred dollars each.
But you're paying them too way too much up there.
And they're twelve-volt batteries.
We gotta be in a window, 'cause we can't go too far down and let that clay liner dry out for cracks, and they really can't be too high. So we really, I mean, we're only looking for like a foot of water to get rid of, so I think Guy's on the right track if we do it.
That's what I was gonna say. Daylight now is from six in the morning till nine at night, I mean...
And we have that for quite a bit of the summer, and we'll be able to circulate a lot of water and lose it off the top of the pond really fast with something like this.
Like he said, you can't, you don't wanna get down to that liner, or we'll be in real trouble then.
Yeah, I think you're just, I mean, right now, you're just riding on the edge, it gets down, you know, it gets down enough through the summer, but if we have a wet winter, so we just wanna, we just wanna be able to get a little more just for some safety factor, and that's how we're gonna do it.
If we get down to that tree for an area, then we have a lot of room to get to.
Garrett, do you see any problems with this picture?
No, I think it's a small enough investment, it's probably worse, you know, 'cause you may not even run it all summer.
Yeah.
You know, but if the smell's not a problem, and the ferment isn't a problem, I can see if I can make sense.
We'll make sure we visit with the DEQ and we've got all the clear on that before we do anything.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, do we need to get hold of the E?
I will, I'll take care of that.
Find out their problems and everything else, what we have to run it at, and then what it would take to upgrade if we wanted to, so.
So are you just, are we able to buy it? Is that why you presented?
Well, that's with, I don't have it, usually what they want is they want paid for it before you send it out, but that is the controllers, the VFDs, the panels, twenty panels, three-by-five panels, and it doesn't include the rack or nothing else, it's the pump, the controllers, the panel, the wiring.
I would say let's, I mean, you guys can do what you want, that's my advice. I think let's get clearance from the DEQ before we go buying anything.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, you gotta, we've gotta have the DEQ's approval before we do anything.
That's my advice.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at to wanna be able to buy it?
The what?
What kind of timeframe are you looking at? When do you want to do it?
Probably want to get them by the summer to get that...
Well, but by next council meeting or...
I mean, we can look into it, I mean, if the DEQ gives us, you know, an email or a letter that says it's fine, I think we press forward.
And so that was, so just...
And they'll have it delivered, I think it's a two-hundred and something dollars to deliver it and through your five business days.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is then just do a motion to approve the system, or you know, the mayor has authority to approve the system, contingent upon DEQ approval and max it at like fifteen thousand, but you don't have to wait for another council meeting.
Exactly.
Now, we've got money in the bank for the sewer project, that we had left over on the sewer project.
And that's what I was thinking, if this could make a big inroad on our usage of water out of our system, 'cause if it start dropping too fast, we could always shut it off.
It's true. You've got a float switch on it, too.
That's a good position to be in.
A float switch, that way it shuts off on...
They come with float switches.
Oh, absolutely. So you have your solar panels, you have an inverter to convert to the...
Three phase tower.
Okay.
It's all there. That's why I was trying to price it elsewhere, but this is a one-packaged system that's set up for that.
The question is, is, you know...
I mean, the power needs to be off.
The panels are set originally, you have fifteen percent, twenty percent, thirty up to, up to now, eighty percent of what the panels are rated, and then it goes down again. So the pumps, it's best, but it's built for that, yeah.
Okay, let me mention one thing before we do that, and that's, you know, we talk about building another pond down there on that sheer corner piece of ground, but that would be, that would take quite a bit of money to build another pond. So if this...
I think that's...
Does this get to use forever, even if we did, put the other pond, we could use it on that too?
I don't think it'd need another pond unless the city rots, right, you know?
Yeah.
So I think it's better than depending on Firth. Yes.
Oh.
There you go, that's my motion.
Okay. All favor.
Good deal. Good deal. We'll work together and get that figured out.
Okay, yeah, let's get us...
So Garrett, what did you find out about the trucks?
Yeah, so I was gonna, as soon as they were done. So I did talk with the company, I talked to the different representatives, so I do have the road use agreement, they did the Bingham County, they got that to me. So apparently, and in all the passions, actually, I think they're telling me the truth, as far as, you know, when I had met with the county, they were trying to get a hold of them, but I don't think Tressa was sending the messages forward, and they saw them by here a couple of times, anyway. So I have, Bingham County is getting me all of those studies, so we'll know the condition of it. I do have the road use agreement that I'll get to you probably next week, but they've got the money set aside for any sort of damages, they'll take care of anything, put it back in better condition than it was before. So once we have all that information, you know, I think you're gonna be fine, they were very, I was very comfortable with my conversations with them. So anyway, so I think all of that's going to be in good shape.
Jim, Jim whatever his last name is, he's, he's at the head of this outfit.
Well, so there's Mark Ronay, and then Rusty Davis is the main manager out of Washington. Anyway, and then, I think the third guy, the person who went today. Anyway, I say, I think I've got all that information now, of what they do with the county, we'll have the state tests, you know, the state came out, and anyway, so once we'll, once I get that road use agreement modified for you guys, I'll bring it up to you and have you sign it. And I felt really good in the whole conversation.
Anyway, this Jim guy.
Darrell, you sure it wasn't Darrell? I was gonna say Darrell Mark and Rusty.
It's on my phone, but that's out of my card. Anyway, he called me yesterday or day before, one, I think we're joined, and I said, I guess, all right, and he said, when they get, now this weather's breaking, he said, as soon as it, you know, they get all, if they can get all the trucks, they're gonna have about thirty trucks for them, that's not counting the water trucks.
My guess is, they'll end up having to repave parts of this, 'cause you know, this summer when it's hot, I think you're gonna start seeing, you know, so, but they've got all that set aside, so I'd say they've got their insurance set aside, they've got funding set aside for all the repairs, so that's all of that information they sent to you.
Yeah, that's not counting the water trucks. I guess there's about six big water tankers. And I talked to Todd Longhurst, and he's got a truck on, leased with them hauling water, and they're pumping out of the river.
Yeah.
And I said, how long can you guys pump out of the river? And he said...
Till November 30th.
Huh?
Till November 30th.
He said there's no, no stipulation this year, I mean...
No, the water seems to end at November 30th to be able to pump out of the river.
Yeah, well, I don't know, maybe like that guy's have all the water they want, but they can't let the people in Batesville have the water they want. That don't make sense to me, but whatever.
Anyway, so I do have all of that put together.
So they did say they're gonna drive the gravel trucks in?
Yeah, so that's, yeah.
Oh, and he did say that they're gonna put up some twenty-five mile an hour signs, speed limit signs, and they will be a different color than most of the, most of the signs. Did you hear that guy? They're gonna, this outfit's gonna put up some twenty-five mile an hour speed limit signs.
Oh, are they?
They're gonna put them up.
Okay. Within our city limits, they're legal to do it, county have to have a special permit, but within our city limits, they can do it if we say so.
They're gonna put them, they're gonna put them down there just after you come over the tracks.
Did they?
So evidently, they've already got the counties.
The county told me that they made them take them down because they didn't have clearance to put them outside of town.
Well, I don't know, I'm just telling you what he said.
That's what Rusty told me earlier this year when I talked to him about speed limits, I asked him to put them back, and he said that we have to go before the Bingham County to get outside of town to shut them down, but inside of town, we can put speed limits at any speed we want, so they can put them in town.
Okay. Well, we got Mount West Water here, did you talk to him about them papers?
Yeah, we're working on that right now. Yep.
Okay.
Working through that right now. I got my, I got my lead operator working on that right now. In fact, he called the DEQ and had a conversation, put it in the bay, getting that filled out.
How much does that cost to assemble, you know, for testing?
Three ninety-five.
Yeah, it's the same it's always been, we haven't changed it.
No, we agreed on three hundred bucks when we got you guys on board.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Absolutely. That's why I changed.
We sent, we sent another contract over, like an electronic one, and it was signed, and so I don't know whose side it is, maybe, I don't know whose side it is, but I think I have it, I can be directed to that, 'cause we converted, we updated our contracts, we changed some stuff, and then sent that over electronically via DocuSign, and it come back, and I can, I can see who did that, I'm not sure who signed it, but I'm sure it did.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Tucker, you have something?
Is that what's going on?
Oh, okay, you don't, you don't have anything to bring out, or just try to keep it straight?
She's just scared of it, but she, she, oh, there's kind of something that wants to be brought up, but it's not just her. Like, I was approached by several people that want to know if we can come up with like a community cleanup project.
No? Can't. They tried that once, and people have used it. It was supposed to been for certain type of garbage, people start throwing fridges, washers, dryers, everything.
Well, not that we, not like us, not like us, like the city, like dispose of it, but more of a, like, get your yard picked up, like, I had one lady say, oh, we need to take more pride in our yard, like Batesville's going downhill, like, just have... Like just have more of a stipulation on, um, like the diff guy, for example, Zach. Um, someone brought up the fact that he was supposed to have his yard picked up and now he's got more and now he's got oil.
He's like.
Yeah, like what is the word I'm thinking of? Yeah. So that's what they're wondering is if there's, uh, someone mentioned something about. Oh, Sister Yum said that when her husband was in.
Um, yellow.
Yeah, yeah. She said that when her husband was mayor, they had like a cleanup. So we could talk to her more and see what. That's your husband?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. It's my, it's my, uh, my wife's.
Oh, really? That's cool.
She's related to him.
She had like kids. They're like my kids, so.
Not like having a big dumpster of people bringing it. They want, we wanna get people to clean their yards up.
Yeah, that's what she is.
Mr. Bears?
What? I'm glad I shop over there.
What?
Where's that?
Never mind.
So like.
I'll clean my yard up. I already hauled the truck door out just there a bit.
He's like my husband. It's all worth money.
Hey, I, it's, it's, same here.
So like Shelley, they, they have a, a cleanup, but you can only put up, up yard.
What they're saying is they wanna tell you how your yard should look.
Yeah.
And I'm saying no, because that's going into HOA territory. I'm sorry. I know some people have dirty yards. I, my yard right now is looking really rough and I know it. But that's my house and I bought it and if I want my yard to look rough, it's gonna look rough. I'm just, it's. Where are we gonna draw that line at?
I thought you meant. See, we've already drawn a line with Zach. We've already like, I mean, we're way over our timeline with him.
You haven't heard the latest about him.
Oh, I haven't. Oh dear.
He wants another, so he wants another outfit in his yard so he can have a classroom. He can homeschool a kid.
So he wants like a trailer or something?
I guess. Wants another, something for another room is all I know, but.
Well, he could come to city council and bring it for us.
Well, he was supposed to have been here this time, but we couldn't find that interpreter. That the city has to pay for, by the way.
Can his wife interpret?
I.
I thought she was the.
Is she, is his wife the same height he is? Guy?
Who, who's this?
Zach.
Zach? Zach.
Come up front so we can hear.
Yes, she's worse. Um, she only does sign language. Uh, she's not very good at writing because she grew up in China and she's not very good at English writing. So, but she does sign language really good.
Okay, so that, she can't help us any then. Well.
Do they use that house?
They live in the house.
And then what needs something else?
So I would, you're not, I mean, you gotta get away on your agenda, so. That's all on your agenda. So.
Okay. I'm confused. That's how you told us it.
Well, it's informational. It's just, no, I'm here to take actions.
Do you have anything?
Um, well, first I just came to just be informed of everything. But, and listening to stuff, I, I do have something to add. So the road from the sign or the entrance or this road right here up to the church. Um, people are just like, you know, hauling, you know? Or just cruising by really, really fast. And Stefan wonders, we had to talk about the, the speed limit signs. Um, speed limit in town's a twenty-five rate. Um, so right here, kind of between my house and yours Larry, if we had a sign there, a stop sign, to kind of slow them down. Um, not last Sunday, but the Sunday before. Uh, I was outside and there was this little, um, forty Audi. I chased him down here at the church and I, I wanted to go look for him, but they, um, I just wanted to let people know that we're slowing down. But some of the, the, and it's not just on Sundays, it's just sort of, the Sundays are the worst. And people trying to get to church on time and stuff like this, but, um, I don't know how, maybe we go about putting a, a stop sign, you know, kind of between.
That's not gonna work if they have one there and they may never check it out.
There used to be one there and it's kind of a nightmare to have double stop signs, but it's so far down to town.
City streets.
If it's a safety thing though, I mean.
What's that?
It's a safety issue though. I mean, you have to paint a stop every so often, but, I mean, if you've got people flying through there.
Yeah, and, and it's not just in the summertime and the wintertime as well. And, you know, and, um, sometimes, you know, that, that, that road is pretty icy right there. So either way, you know, um, I don't know how, like you said, that, that, that it got taken down. I don't know. Is there a way to put it back up or is there?
No, it's, it's a city street, so you can put it on your agenda and have a conversation about it.
Best thing to do too is to get, tell me what area you're talking about. I don't know you.
Oh, and so right, so right here in the corner, um, where, where the.
You bought Jerry's house.
Yeah.
Little Jerry House's?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yeah, and so from there to the.
So that's what we need is a.
What's your name? I know where you live.
Oh.
And I've met your wife.
Uh, um, so my name's A S I D R O.
Okay.
Yeah, there's city streets. I mean, city council has every right to put stop signs wherever you want. So if you wanna discuss it, it's all on your agenda. And, you know, any corners you think, maybe you need the safety.
Well, we got a stop sign on the other corner. People don't stop at that.
That's what I was gonna say. The best thing to do is try to get the license plate and call the Bigham County.
That's what I do.
Because people run my stop sign on time constantly. I've seen almost, people get wrecked there.
Yeah.
So a stop sign is really not, you're gonna have, have somebody, have the cops come down and take the license plate. They will go talk to them. That's what they told me.
They say the citizen's arrest. If you see them doing something, you tell the cop come over and he'll, he'll, he'll write you a ticket and you have to sign it. And they'll witness it. And then you'll have to go to court.
Well, it's not a citizen's arrest. It's not a citizen's arrest.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just an infraction from the stop sign.
Yeah.
Of course, also if you have your cell phone out, you're able to record them doing it and get the license plate number. You turn that over to, to the sheriff's department today.
So we put cameras up, but they suck, so. They, they sometimes catch, they'll catch the tree moving up the car.
Yeah.
I just see an iron.
I thought if I had my signs, it's, oh, I'm gonna get a rock in the windshield.
I agree with you.
On what?
Cleaning the city up.
Oh, yeah. What you do is.
On that, all you, what some people are probably looking for is just, um, May twenty-eighth is going to be city cleanup day. Clean up your yard.
We're not talking about that.
I mean, you just, no, I'm saying she just, as, as a general public thing, everyone, twenty-eighth, clean up your yard. That's it. City's not painting. You're just putting it out as a public event.
So I have a suggestion on that maybe. Is you know how Shelley does, like you cut grasses down, they come in and chip them up or whatever, yeah, do that. And like you were saying, you start hauling, uh, fridges out or anything like that. Okay, twenty bucks a fixture. If, if it's something else other than wood chips or grass clippings and stuff like that. Have a guy or somebody go out, take your driftwood or they'll haul it off. That's fine. And then the city can make some money off of that.
What they're saying though is say you've got a bunch of.
Yeah, forcing them to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I understand HOA. I don't live in HOA.
I really, that's what Sister Yum was talking about.
Yeah, you're, you guys are talking about two different issues.
Well, we can ask her what, um, I'll have her come when it's on the agenda and we'll, um, pick her brain about what, how her husband, when he was mayor, what he did. She said it worked really good, so, I mean, it's worth a shot. Seeing what, what she has in plan.
Yeah. So that one, and then, uh, we need to talk about that pump. That guy was talking about.
Well, you have to be fully approved that, that you can make a decision.
Oh, okay. As soon as we hear back.
You have the authority once you hear from the EQ.
Okay. All righty. Anybody got anything else?
So is it okay that all these big outfits run up and down our streets here? The street right here is a county road.
No, it's not. Not a county road.
Well, we, we were told when we first moved here that it was, that we, as a city, hadn't, hadn't necessarily asked for this name.
This is not a county road. This is a city road.
So, so then all these semis and everything that run up and down the road, it's, it's just fine?
Well, we was gonna pass an ordinance on that, but if you stop like spud trucks and gravel trucks and all that. You've gotta stop cement trucks coming into Baysal to pull cement and everything out.
Do we have anything on that? I can wait for that right now or is it just?
Wait until it's posted.
What is it?
Home town's posted.
Six ton, I think.
It's, it's, what is it, sixteen thousand pounds or service vehicles exempt, it says. On the signs.
I mean, I've asked it, I've asked Bigham County to go write, Mark, Mike DiVagio a ticket. Cause he brings the whole semi in here and parks it. And all I do is go down and talk to him and that's it. They're gone. They wouldn't do anything about it.
Well, it makes no sense. It certainly, you know, like you say, a cement truck to pour, pour, pour home and that would not be exempt.
But you have, you have Duane, you have Duane over there that gets big semis coming in to deliver his products. So, I mean, isn't that right, Garrett?
What's that?
We was gonna pass in law on.
Well, you talked about it, but.
Big trucks.
I was gonna say, I know we've talked about it, but.
But you said we'd have to limit.
Well, so you gotta limit everybody. I mean, as far as.
Yeah, you gotta limit everybody. You just can't break it down like you want it.
You know, you have certain ones already, but yeah, you can't, if you pass an ordinance to target somebody, that's not, that's not right.
I don't know. I don't know where we're at. So are you, are you gonna get a hold of? Find out about that?
Yeah, I'll answer.
Okay. Okay. Anything else from anybody? A juror?
I think Washington juror.
Pretty quick.